Good evening. Good evening, everybody. Is my mic on?
It will be eventually. Keep talking.
Good evening. Tonight is Tuesday, January fourteenth, two thousand and thirteen. Welcome to our regularly scheduled school committee meeting. I'd like to begin with the pledge of allegiance. Please join me. I'm actually gonna move public input to after the presentations tonight, just so apparently there's a jazz band concert and some of the students here need to leave here as soon as possible, so I'm going to make that decision and just move public input. So at this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Olivo?
Yes.
Mrs. Congdon?
Present.
Dr. Domingo?
Present.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Present.
Mrs. Donovan?
Present.
Mrs. Quinney?
Present.
Six present.
Thank you. This time, I'm gonna move to the podium. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming out this evening. As you know, tonight, we're gonna be presenting some awards from the superintendent for our John and Abigail Adams Scholarship winners and also to individuals who scored advanced on the MCAS, both ELA, English Language Arts, and Math MCAS last spring. We're gonna begin with the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship awardees, and I'd just like to give you a little bit of information about that. The John and Abigail Adams Scholarships provides a tuition waiver for up to eight semesters of undergraduate education at a Massachusetts State College or university. The scholarship covers tuition only. Unfortunately, fees and room and board are not included. The scholarship must be used within six years of a student's high school graduation. In order to be eligible for the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship, Massachusetts Public High School students in the class of two thousand and fifteen or earlier must meet the following criteria. They must have had scores of advanced and proficient on grade-ten MCAS tests in English Language Arts and Mathematics, and have a combined score on the MCAS ELA, English Language Arts and Mathematics, tests that place them in the top twenty-five percent of students in the graduating class in their district. So obviously, this is a prestigious award to receive, and we'd like to recognize those students tonight. As I call your name, please come up and accept your award from the superintendent. We're gonna ask that you just pause a minute for one individual picture, which will be sent home with the students at a later date, and then we're gonna do one group photo and get everybody out of here, okay? So at this time, we'd like to recognize David Andino. For students that are not present this evening, what we're going to do is just make sure that Ms. Allen gets the certificates, and she will present them to the students at a later time, but we recognize David. Tatiana Arroyo. Thank you. Ms. Rosa Brito. Rosa is also our student representative on the, for the school committee. We thank Rosa for being a part of the board this year. Thank you. Next is Mr. Steven Celestino. Does not appear that he's here, but we'll make sure he gets his award. Ms. Jennifer Frichette. We'd like to recognize Catherine Frichette. Ms. Megan Garley. Ms. Erin Jovan. Ms. Alexa Manzo. Ms. Casey Mitchell. Please note that Casey was also the recipient of the Worcester County Superintendent Association two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen Scholar Award. Elijah O'Leary. He's not here. We'll make sure his award is sent to the school. Ms. Tiffany Ortega. Mr. Jason Peck. We'll make sure Jason gets his award. Mr. Joseph Pomprion. Thank you. Orlando Casada could not be with us this evening, but we also recognize his achievement and would like to celebrate his success, so we'll make sure he gets his award. Next, we recognize Kayla Serrano. Next, we, we honor Lucas Saint Germain. Adriana Stratton. Thank you. Emilio Torres. He's at a basketball game. We'll make sure he gets his award. Karina Torres. Javier Torres Jr. And last, but certainly not least, Miranda Watkins. Miranda couldn't be with us. We'd like to ask all of the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship recipients to join the superintendent and Ms. Allen for a group photo. You want, school committee, do you wanna join them? We joined them last. Do you wanna join them? Or you wanna just feature the kids? Job well done. We look forward to hearing about your future success. Please keep us posted. Now, I'm gonna do the MCAS. You want me to start with five, six, eight, ten, or go ten backwards? Okay. Next, we're gonna recognize those students who received advanced scores on both the English Language Arts and Math MCAS tests. We're gonna start with grade-ten and work our way backwards. Again, some of these students may not be present this evening, but we will ensure that they receive their awards. Clarissa Camacho. Sorry about that. Thank you. Congratulations, Clarissa. Moses Cardona. Is Moses here? We'll make sure he receives his award. Annika Ellis. Annika? Annika's not here this evening. Courtney Galoppoe. Is Courtney here? Courtney is not here. And Brett Hoare. Is Brett Hoare here? Must be a good night on TV. Also, Devon Olivo. Nadie Ramirez. Is she here? Benjamin Snow? Is Benjamin here? Nilsalise Torres. Oh, I'm sorry. We also recognize Jeremy Maldonado. I don't know if Jeremy is available. And Robert Walsh Jr. Those are our grade-ten students who scored advanced on both English Language Arts and Math MCAS. We're gonna do grade-eight next, and we'd like to welcome up Ryan Peters. Rebecca Walker. With, for grade-six, we'd like to recognize Cassandra Bess. Cameron Carpenter. Eliza Wandelier. Gina Yu. Thank you. We'd also like to recognize the achievement of two sixth-grade students who are not here this evening. Isabella Anchak and Madison Gendreau. Our last presentations are for grade-five students. Michaela Carl. Lenaya Brant. I don't know if Lenaya's here. Gonna pull her award and save that, I think. Thaddeus Stubbsky. Maeve Perrault. Maralex Ramirez. Carla Rodriguez. I didn't see this person, but, oh, Jada Rodriguez. Jada. And lastly, Jaclyn Trethaway. Congratulations, everybody. If we could now have a photo of our MCAS recipients, MCAS Award recipients tonight. Congratulations, everybody. You are free to attend the rest of the meeting, or you're welcome to go home if there's something more pressing. We're just gonna wait a moment for the room to clear out before we resume our meeting up at the dais. Thank you. Got a lot to go. Public input. I don't see anybody here, so I'm just gonna ask twice. All right. I don't know why we ever did that. I didn't know if that was protocol. Okay. Just to say, we asked three times. All right. Are we ready? Are we good? Okay, we're gonna resume our meeting and request if there's any public input at this time. Is there anybody from the public that wishes to address the school committee? Seeing none, we'll move on to approval of minutes. We're going to approve the regular school committee meeting minutes of December third, two thousand and thirteen. Do I have a motion? Dr. Domingo makes a motion? Seconded by Mrs. Donovan. Is there any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor? Was unanimous of those present. Yep. Chairwoman's announcements. I just have a couple things to announce. We, later on the agenda, we'll be voting subcommittee assignments. We had to change those with the welcome addition of Mr. Olivo, so that's something we'll be addressing later. I wanted to let the public know that there have been some enhancements to the district website relative to the school committee, specifically individual policies. Instead of pulling up a section of the policy manual and scrolling through the entire manual, it's now possible just to find a specific policy, click on it, and get the information that you need. So we sincerely thank the central office staff for their efforts to make those enhancements. There's also, under the school committee tab on the left-hand side of the webpage, there's also a school committee announcements section where some, any special announcements and some archived information will be available for the public to access. So we appreciate that. Enhancements, as I understand it, are still ongoing, but this should make for a much better website in the district, at least on our end. I just wanna let everybody know here, and the superintendent may discuss this later, but that this past Saturday, the school committee participated in kind of a mid-year retreat meeting. This was an open meeting, although nobody from the public attended the meeting, and it gave the school committee the opportunity, kind of at the mid-year point, to discuss our district goals, goal-setting processes, strategies going forward. It was a very good meeting, and we appreciate, I appreciate the opportunity, and I think most of my school committee members did as well. So I just wanted to let everybody know that that had happened. It was kind of a nice time for us to get together. I think, people may not understand that the group of us don't get together that often, if ever, other than at the dais, so this was a nice opportunity to do that. And I wanted to let everybody know, there's no school next Monday. It's Dr. Martin Luther King Day, and there'll be a half-day of school next Friday, January twenty-fourth. Finally, I just wanted to let everybody know that I've attended a couple of programs at the Hanover Theater in Worcester as part of the Distinguished Speaker Series. I received some tickets as a birthday gift, and there are two upcoming speakers that may be of interest to the community, and I just learned, actually, that the tickets for students and teachers is greatly discounted, so I wanted to let everybody know. On February twenty-seventh, at seven-thirty, DeeDee Myers will be coming. DeeDee Myers had an active role in the Clinton administration, and she'll be talking about why women should rule the world. That's the subject of her presentation, her discussion, and what typically happens is the speakers get up and speak for a period of time and then take questions from the audience. It's very interesting. I've seen to date Rudy Giuliani and Ben Carson, and found them both very interesting. The one I'm most excited to see, and the reason, I think, my sister bought the tickets for me, is on March twentieth, two thousand and fourteen, at seven o'clock, Jeffrey Canada will be presenting at the Hanover Theater. Again, tickets, just fifteen dollars for students and teachers. Jeffrey Canada is pretty well-known in education circles. He runs the Harlem Children's Zone School. He has very successful, successful graduation rates, attendance rates, all that sort of thing for the students in Harlem. So anyway, he might be somebody that is of interest to members of our community. I wanted to pass that along. That's all I have this evening for the chairwoman's announcements. Next, I will turn it over to the report of the representative of our student advisory committee. Rosa Brito. Ms. Brito, welcome.
Good evening. First of all, congratulations to all the students getting an award tonight. You should all feel very proud, as all the parents should as well. The announcements tonight. Wednesday, January twenty-second, will be the school council meeting at five-thirty p.m. at SMHS Library. La Wawa, door-to-door movie night, will also be the same night at seven p.m. Five dollars for adults, three dollars for students. Please stay right after and enjoy this great night. Friday, January twenty-fourth, will be your early release day at eleven-ten a.m. Tuesday, February fourth, will be parent-teachers conferences from four p.m. to seven p.m. Please come and join all the teachers that night and ask all the questions you have. Decision Day for Quincy Monmouth Community College has been postponed to January twenty-seventh for all seniors interested in this day. The Jazz Band will actually be performing tonight for the Alliance Club, so best luck to them. I bet they will do very good. Stuko is in the process of planning a winter carnival for the week after February vacation, and the history department will be holding an election for Representative Day for two junior students, in which they will be able to go to the state house from one day and enjoy what the state house has to offer to them. And that is all I have for tonight. Have a good evening.
Thank you very much, Rosa.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is our school committee reports. I'd like to ask Mrs. Donovan, Chair of the Curriculum Subcommittee, for a report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The curriculum Subcommittee met on Monday, December ninth. Present were myself, ex-officio member, Mrs. McLaughlin, committee member, Dr. Domingo, as well as committee members Jill Congdon and Erin Quinney. The first order of business was to approve our minutes, so our minutes from the November eighteenth, two thousand and thirteen, meeting were approved as, as written. The second order of business that we did was we talked about our goals. If you remember the last- was we talked about our goals. If you remember the last time I did an update, I mentioned that we had done a, step one, was a brainstorming session to come up with at least a half-a-dozen ideas of things that we would like to accomplish between now and the end of the school year. Upon further review, we found that three of them perhaps were more out of our purview as school committee members, those being a family game night, coming up with a curriculum for place-based learning, as well as reviewing the summer reading program. However, because we feel they are still good goals and strongly needed in our, in our curriculum structure, we will be referring those items to the appropriate personnel in central office and in the schools themselves, so that those objectives and initiatives may be fulfilled between now and the end of the school year. So, looking at our goals specifically as a curriculum Subcommittee, we decided that there were two major, bigger issues that were within our purview that we would like to examine further. The first being our English Language Learner Program, and the second being our Title I Program. Our next meeting is going to be on January 27, at 6:30 in Room N100, and at that meeting, again, we will specifically be looking at Title I issues as well as ELL issues. We've decided to do some research between our last meeting and this upcoming meeting, to try to get some ideas on structures and programs and things that are out there, so that we can better address our subgroups. Title I, we get a lot of money for Title I, and we want to make sure that that money is well-spent and put towards learning programs, after-school programs, that will best benefit our children. As far as our English Language Learner Program, obviously, that subgroup is still a major subgroup that is not performing well on the MCAS, and it's our, our duty to look at it differently and come up with a totally different approach on how we address our ELL program. So, we had a large discussion about that, and again, that discussion will continue at our next meeting. Another suggestion that we kind of just tossed around, again, nothing etched in stone, but something we talked about for our kids is grouping our students together with teachers. And by that, I mean if you start with a teacher in grade one, maybe you have that same teacher all the way up through grade five. Or if you're in grade two, maybe we loop a class into grade three, where you stay with your same classmates as well as your same teacher. These are things that we just clearly discussed, but will need to investigate further and then provide recommendations to the superintendent, as well as our Director of Teacher and Learning, to see if this is something that our school district does in fact want to take on in an endeavor to improve student achievement. Our final order of business was to provide a reflection on our December 4, school facilities tour. Members of the curriculum Subcommittee, as well as Pat Gardner, who's our Director of Curriculum and Learning, went on a learning tour at all of our schools. We were guided at each school by the building principal, and taken classroom by classroom, and through the hallways, and looking at data walls, looking at instruction in the classroom, and getting an overall feel for the educational environment. We came up with a lot of pros, and we also came up with an equal amount of cons relative to that tour, that we have forwarded on to our superintendent, so that certain issues can be addressed and other issues can be carried on, because there's some great things being done in there. We want to make sure that those great things continue. Other than that, I think we were all set, and again, our next meeting is Monday, January 27, 6:30 PM in Room M100. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Donovan. Mrs. Quinney, a policy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Policy Subcommittee had a meeting on December 11. Present were myself, committee member Jill Congdon, and Cara Donovan, and ex-officio member Lauren McLaughlin. That meeting, we continued to review the Section B of the policy manual. We reviewed several policies, and one we had made changes to and will be forwarding to the school committee. Our next meeting will be Wednesday, January 16, and it won't be in Room M1, tomorrow, the fif, I'm sorry, January 15, tomorrow, in Room M114, which is across from Room M100. That will be at 6:30, and we will continue to go through the policies in the policy manual in Section B. Each person present was assigned four policies to review at the last meeting, review our policies, research other policies within the state, as well as the MAS-C policy, and make recommendations to bring to that meeting. Anyone would like to join us? We'd love to see you tomorrow, January 15, Room M114, at 25 Colab at 6:30. Thank you.
Thank you. Regarding negotiations, I'm currently Chair. Will be, that will may, will change later tonight, probably with a vote. However, just to let you know that there has been an agreement reached, a preliminary agreement reached with the teachers' union on their contract, and I'm gonna let Mr. Nemberco fill the public in on that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm just pleased to say that Negotiations Subcommittee worked with the Teachers Association and were able to come to an agreement rather quickly, because we were moving away from the traditional bargaining positions to more of an interest base, and we requested, since they didn't have a contract last year, and they just continued the previous one, and by the time we were able to get everything organized, we started in the fall, and by beginning of December, we had completed it. And due to the weather, the vote just recently took place, and I'm pleased to say that the contract was resoundly approved by the union by two-to-one margin. And I think it's really important to focus on that piece, because when I came here, one of the big issues was the budget. The budget was a complete mess, and my first concern was that would we even end up in the positive? And I know you've, in the past, you've had budget issues where you overspent and you were negative, and the town had to bail people out, et cetera, et cetera. I wasn't about to do that, and all the years I've worked, I've never been in the, in the red. So, without a business manager, we hired one in May. We all went to work, and were able to redirect resources, eliminate positions that were not necessary. We were able to redirect a number of activities. We tightened up the finances. We now have monthly statements that are coming out that are actually accurate, and I joke about it, but I think it was really serious. When I came here, I could not stand in front of a group of people and say that I knew how many people were working in the South Beach Public Schools. Could not do that. So, now, we can. We know how many we have. We know what line items are getting paid from, whether they're grant-funded, and we've been able to put lots of checks and balances and procedures in place, and all of that with the goal of having enough money, so if we're gonna improve the system, and if we're going to get out of Level 4 status, we have to change the conversation in this town from one of negativism, criticism, character assassination, to talking about how do we improve the learning for our kids? And I haven't heard that. And I think it's critical that we say, if teachers are the most important element, and researchers show that a quality teacher in front of the room makes the biggest difference. Well, we have to be competitive with the surrounding communities and be able to recruit teachers, and we need a starting salary that is competitive. We were the lowest salary in the region. Now with the new contract, we're right in the middle. We're not gonna get anywhere yet, but we're in the, in the middle, and we're competitive. The three Rs of administration with regard to human resources, we have to be able to recruit people. We can always get new teachers, first and second-year people. The problem is retaining them, and you've been able to, you've had a swinging door here. So, the three Rs that I use is recruit, means a starting salary that's competitive, retain a scale that makes sense, and a contract that supports teachers, and then reward. And if, and as a contract has been approved, we have a scale that starts at $42,000 and goes to $76,000 for a classroom teacher, and they're all zeros at the end of it. Simple, straightforward, and the focus is on where we need to do. So, I was very pleased that the vote was two-to-one. At first, we were a little concerned, because we also had some language in there, that we addressed the issue of a number of personal days. We also issued the number of sick days, and then we clarified language. And we also looked at the day. Now, the elementary school day is the same as the secondary day. So, we're all working toward creating a consistency, a logical consistency, that, that, that people will say, hey, you know, that place makes sense. They're actually coherent about how they're approaching things. So, I think that was a critical point. So, just want to say that the school committee at their next meeting will be able to vote on this. They've approved it. The school committee has to formally approve it.
We never vote tonight.
Pardon me?
We never vote tonight.
Oh, we have vote tonight?
Sorry.
Well, I spoke too soon. Okay? So, we'll accept that. But I think that my, my main concern was to have enough in the budget to reward the many dedicated people that we have in the system, and to be continuing to recruit new teachers, as we may have changes that are necessary, retirements occur, et cetera, et cetera. So, just want to say that about the contract. So, we'll be voting on this later on. And the same topic of our retreat, we also looked at the goals of the school system, and I think that when we went around, we said, what is the mission statement for the South Beach Public Schools? Well, the 280 words, no one really remembers. So, we're working on a very short one, and we'll have that out to the public in a draft form very quickly, and it's very simple, that our primary goal for the South Beach Public Schools is to improve the performance and achievement of all students, not just some students, but all students. Let me just say that again. The school committee, in unison, agreed that the goal of the school system should be very simple, very direct, and it's to improve the performance and achievement of all students. Our biggest gaps are with ELL and special ed. They've been ignored. So, now we have to start our budget process, and our budget process has already started. Next week, the governor will come out a week early with a House One budget, and then we'll know approximately how much will be available to us. So, we look forward to continuing the positive movement that we've developed here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Congdon, would you like to report on family and community engagement?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our last meeting was canceled, and our next meeting is scheduled tentatively for Monday, February 3, at 6:30 in Room M100 on Colab. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Quinney, can we have a report on the SPED PAC liaison?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The last SPED PAC meeting was also canceled due to the power outage. The next meeting will be this Thursday, January 16. On the agenda, we'll be discussing what topics the SPED PAC would like to be presented regarding an upcoming workshop that will be done in collaboration with Kids OT. Also, they'll be discussing how to best dispense of funds that are currently being raised by the Eagles. And their meeting will be at 6 o'clock, January 16, in Room M100. 6 to 7, all are welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Quinney. Next, we have a presentation from Ms. Katie Alecia, our food service director, on proposed lunch price increase. Welcome, Ms. Alecia.
Good evening, everyone. Everybody should have a packet that was sent to you for the last meeting that obviously got canceled because of the power outage. What I'm presenting to you right now is a proposal for an increase in the school lunches. For years, we've been behind what the state mandates as an average lunch price. The average lunch price that the state mandates, not that anybody wants this specifically, but the state is mandating, that the average price is $2.59. Our average lunch price is $2.13. So, we are way below the minimum, so the amount of money that we're getting in differential for what a reimbursable meal is, is way below where we should be. So, what I'm proposing is that we bump everybody up to $2.50, and you'll also see the piece of paperwork there from the state itself that says, that states what it's supposed to be. There's also a list there of all the local other schools around the area that what their lunch prices are. Actually, Quabog just went up to $2.75 as of January 1. I'm proposing $2.50. It's still underneath what the state requires, but it's a move in the correct direction. That's pretty much it. Questions?
Anybody have questions? Mr. Olivo?
Through you, Madam Chair, to Ms. Alecia. Ms. Alecia, with this proposed increase to $2.50, what does that do for the menu for these students? Is it, will it improve the menu at all?
Improving the menu? Necessary. What the money does, it just, it helps buy the food, not necessarily, a lot of our food is governmentally funded, so it can help. A lot of the money in general last year with the new requirements for the fresh fruits and vegetables and all those new things coming in. Right now, we're in the hole because of all those added-on things to the menu. You know, like, right now, it's mandatory. Back in the day, it wasn't mandatory fruits and vegetables. Fruits and vegetables, you all know, you all eat at home. They're not cheap. So, we'd never put, an increase was never put in place when that happened, so we just keep falling back. So, it's a matter of trying to catch back up to where we need to be right now, and then, as we move forward, we can progress into better things.
Okay. Now, you're saying that we started, we're starting in the hole already. Is that to say that we have a debt that we need to make up?
Yes, we have to catch up to it, yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Mrs. Quinney?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you to Ms. Alecia. Thank you for coming in, for presenting to us tonight. I had a question regarding, would there be any increase to the reduced lunch price?
No, that is, what it is at right now is what it's state mandates. State mandates that reduced price is 40 cents, and that's what it is right now.
And would that impact at all breakfast?
No, we are not currently looking into breakfast.
Just $2.50 for lunch, and the state mandate is $2.59. Is there a reason that we're not meeting that state minimum?
What has happened in previous years. I wasn't here in previous years, so I know every year, the state does go up a little bit, so it's a matter of the school district to keep up with what the state is moving up every year, because obviously, every year, just like anything else, cost of living goes up a little bit. So, they do bump that up, and every year, they will increase a little bit more. So, for most parts, school districts, what they do is they slowly move up with the state to stay within range of where they should be. But from what I've seen from past records, it fell behind years ago, and slowly increasing five cents here, five cents there, when you're already a quarter behind, you're never gonna catch up, and that's why there's the need for a large, larger jump at the moment.
So, from the two to the two, $2.50 for elementary?
Yeah.
If we're still behind the state average, would you envision that the price would go up again in September to meet that minimum that is required of us?
Maybe not in September, but maybe in the next year, because right now, like, the state's looking at, I just had an audit, they said, you know, we need to make moves. Show us something, so then this way, they can, they can say, all right, they're making moves, they're going in the correct direction. It may not be specifically in September, maybe down the road a little further, but eventually, in the near future, it will have to be caught up.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? Mrs. Donovan?
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you to Ms. Alecia. Nice to see you, Katie.
Nice to see you, too.
My first question is, you, when you originally had prepared this memo, you wanted to start it as of January 1, and then we had the power outage and the meeting got canceled. Do you have a new date set in mind that you want?
February 3.
Pardon me?
February 3.
Okay.
If possible, and what, I mean, I've already got it all planned out. Letters going home, a phone blast, something on the website, something in the newspaper, to reach out to everybody as quickly as possible, humanly possible, to get the word out if passed.
Okay. Another question I add is, who makes the final decision on whether or not we accept this increase? We being the district as a whole. It's not something that we, do we have to vote on it as a, so it's up to us to decide?
Yeah, it's coming up in a couple bullets.
Okay. So, do we have any leeway as to say how much of an increase we want, other than what you're proposing? The only reason I ask that is because a lot of the paperwork that you had provided to us stated that it was almost like a mandate, what the state required, what the, the interest was that, or the percentage, I should say, rather than interest, the percentage that we were able to increase each meal by. And that was on the second page of that USDA report that you gave us. And I, and again, this is somewhat new to me, because I don't remember us raising the prices last year, and if we did, I apologize. prices last year, and if we did, I apologize for my confusion. But it just said that the amount per meal increase is 2% plus 2.93 for an inflation rate for an overall percent increase of 4.93. So, I didn't know, is that the mandated percent that we can't go higher than that? Because if we go with your proposal, we are going much higher than that. So, I'm just confused on what a man, what the mandate is on what we can increase versus what we want to increase. I understand your theory behind why we need to increase it as much as we need to, but I don't know if we're going outside the boundary of what is mandated, if that makes sense to you.
No, it makes sense. I'm honestly, I'm not quite sure. I don't think, I know, like I said, Quabog went up a quarter just recently, just this past month, with the $2 to the $2.50 range. I'm not sure. This is my first lunching price, so I'm learning with you.
I just don't know if this is a number that's hard to justify. I don't want to give, I don't want to give anybody a hard time about this, but I, I'm kind of online with Mr. Olivo saying is, "I've seen the meals, and I think for somebody, for some of the families that need to pay, they're kind of, they're not as desirable as perhaps they could be." And I think we're looking that if we were to increase the price, it would be more, we could justify the increase if we knew that our kids were going to get better choices or if we could somehow determine what it is that the majority of the kids eat and provide that, because I see so much waste, especially at the elementary level. I think the high school level does pretty good. They got Nick Billis up there, and I know the kids, you know, I think that, I don't believe that there is as much waste of food as due to a lack of, or a distaste of the food like there is at the elementary level.
No, honestly, my personal opinion in elementary level is the lack of equipment that we have in the kitchens. There's only so much you can do with.
You can do.
An oven. And that's, that's my argument on that. That's all they have, not a single burner, nothing. Ovens and warmers. There's only so much you can do with that. At home, how would you feel without a stove top? You know, and there's no possible way with the new school. I would love to, Wells used to be able to make stuff and send it out. From what I hear, I wasn't here when Wells was, I was here when Wells was a school, but as a student, I didn't know what they did in the kitchen. They were able to produce more food from that kitchen because they had more room, they had more people. Now, we've got a smaller kitchen, more people in it, feeding more kids out of it, six burners at the middle high school, you know, there's no room for us to be making more food to send down there. So, it's a matter of what you can do with what we have. We don't have very much to work with at those schools. At the middle high school, we have a brand-new kitchen.
Right.
But it's still not big enough to help out at those other schools.
Okay. If we were to accept the increase that you're proposing, does our reimbursement rate increase as well, or does that?
It stays the same.
That's, that stays the same?
Like, right now, what we're getting for the reimbursement for a paid student, we're losing out on 40 cents per kid. It's about 40 cents or so per, per meal. So, we're getting full for a free kid, but since we're so low on the paid kids, we're losing that much more money.
So, right now, like we said, I think Mr. Olivo was asking, our books right now, we're in the red as far as a lot of this stuff, because our prices are way below that mandated amount. Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Is there anybody else? Mrs. Congdon?
Through you, Madam Chair, to Ms. Alecia. I have it in my packet, but just to explain to the public what some of the costs, I know you mentioned Quabog, but if you could just explain to the public some of the surrounding towns' costs of the different school districts, other, like, we have Tantascwa, Webster, Oxford, if we could just mention that to the public, so they are aware of the towns that are closer to us.
Yep. Well, there's Oxford, they're at $2.25, their highest, Webster, $2.25, Tantascwa is up at $2.50, Brookfield's $2.50, Quabog, actually, I think Brookfield just moved up with Quabog. They're two, they just bumped up to $2.75 as of January 1st. Charlton is at $2.50, Bay Path, $2.65, Spencer East, Brookfield, $2.75, the closer places. Auburn, $2.50 and $2.75. Lester, $3. Those are some of the closer places. Some of the other places are a little further away and a little higher-end towns. So, some, they go up to $3.50. That's in Truesberry.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll sit on the side. Mrs. Quinney?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, through you to Ms. Alecia. Currently, we're reimbursed for children that qualify for the free lunch program at $2.98. Is that correct?
Correct.
Per meal. So, in essence, we, we charge the federal government $2.98 in order to provide lunch to children that are in the free lunch program.
Correct.
And now, we're in the elementary school. Currently, we charge almost a dollar less.
Yes.
To families that don't qualify for that program. Okay. I just wanted to clarify.
Correct.
And then with the 40 cents, so, when families pay the 40 cents when they're reduced lunch, the government then, because they qualify for reduced lunch, pays the district $2.58.
Yes, which is the difference to get to the $2.98.
To get to the $2.98. So, based on that, we're being reimbursed $2.98 for children that have free and reduced lunch and only requiring parents for the same food to pay $2.
Yes.
Is that correct? Thank you.
Thank you. May I just ask a question? How would this increase catch us up in our deficit? What is our deficit? Do we know what that is?
I don't, it's actually something that Karen Sheridan and I have still been working on, because things were, just like Buzz, things were kind of in jambles when I got here. And now that I've got Karen, a full-time finance manager, somebody, so her and I have been meeting almost on a weekly basis to try to get everything completely in order.
Okay. And my thought was, I'm sorry, Buzz, you want to go?
No, no.
Okay. One of my thoughts was, the discussion concerning food and nutrition and wellness and all of that, is that the well, the newly-formed Wellness Advisory Committee might be somewhere where that could be discussed further, how to increase, you know, the, decrease the waste and present meals that might be more appetizing, if that is indeed an issue or a problem.
No, I think that's a great idea, and we could even get some kids on the, to show up to a meeting once in a while, give us feedback. Those, that's the best critics right there.
Did you? Oh. Oh, see, great minds think alike. Okay. Anybody else? Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
We'll be voting on that price increase a little later on.
Yep.
There's no report of the finance director this evening.
Actually, there is.
Oh, never mind. The superintendent will present that as part of his report.
Well, I think that's important, and your packet, you have November's monthly budget update, Ms. Sheridan, with her staff has done a really good job taking all those bits and pieces. And we were talking to Ms. Alecia. One of the first things we did last spring was, she reviewed the summer feeding program that had always been in the red, and then this past year, we ended up with a small profit. And food services is one area where we, we can't be subsidizing the food services with academic dollars. Every district I worked in, the food services was always a self-supporting enterprise, and they generated enough funds that when they needed to buy new freezers, new equipment, everything else, it was all done with that. So, we're very carefully reviewing expenditures and how much of the dollars go into that. So, we took a positive step last summer by coming out with a $7,000 or $8,000 surplus from the work by consolidating and organizing that. So, we're doing the same thing. With this budget, I'm very pleased to say that we have accurate numbers. Each school and each center, each site are called cost centers. They get their monthly budgets, they know exactly how much, and they are now responsible ensuring for that to happen. In the past, it was always centralized, and one person made decisions, and it was all over the place. Principals came to me, and departments said, "We have no idea how much money we have left." So, this bulky thing goes out to every single school, every single month. So, this is, I just wanted to thank Karen Sheridan and her staff for putting this all together. You can go through here, you can find every line item, and it balances. It actually has percent of the budget that's spent as of November, and so people can see. And then, last year, we had a whole series of issues with expenditures that weren't encumbered. So, now, they're encumbered, they're in the proper columns, and the town of Southbridge is pleased with the fact that we're getting our act together. There are appropriate checks and balances and so on. So, I just want to make that statement. So, it's all here. We're now in the process of developing the procedures for fiscal '15 budget, and then we'll be reporting on a regular basis on that. Okay, I'm done.
Do you have anything else under your report?
Yes, I do. I want to have Pat to come up and introduce a superintendent, a supervisor of instruction, Mr. Aaron Osborne, that we, who came on board in December. Pat?
Good evening. We're very excited to have Aaron Osborne join the Office of Teaching and Learning as the director, the supervisor of instruction. He comes with a wealth of experience. He has an undergraduate degree from the University of Massachusetts Amherst, where he was an NCAA swimmer. He has an MBA from the University of Massachusetts, Boston. Prior to going into teaching a number of years ago, he was a director of administrative services for the Housing Authority of the City of Fresno, California, and he oversaw a $100 million budget. And then, following quite a number of business adventures, he had a calling for teaching. And he was one of my teachers that I hired last year when I was a principal. Kind of hired him off the street after looking at his resume, and he was a vital part to our turnaround at Turner Falls High School. His classroom was a district exemplar. When we wanted to show other teachers what an effective, efficient classroom looked like, we could always count on him to show it. His math students excelled. He taught a business course in which the students all took a Microsoft Suite class at Greenfield Technical Community College. They all passed it. And he worked with data teams at our school as a volunteer, and when this opportunity became available, that we were able to hire someone, he was one of the first people that came to my mind. And when we took a look at a number of people, he quickly rose to the top. He's already made a huge impact in the high school and middle school particularly, but also in the elementary schools. And he's just been a great addition, and I think especially, he's done work already looking at our subgroups, as you mentioned earlier, that need a lot of attention, the sped and the lower income. And he already has some strategies, he's already working on some benchmark testing. And so, I'll ask him to say a couple of words. Thank you very much. Mr. Osborne?
Pat would almost make me sound competent, would she? So, as, without being redundant, as Pat alluded to, you know, I've got some experience in both business, private sector, public sector, data analysis, things like that. I just actually, last week, completed my school business administrator licensure with the state. I've been a classroom teacher for five years now, and I think I bring a set of skills that dovetails well with what I think Pat, Buzz, and the whole administrative team wants to do here. Hopefully, it will jive with the efforts you folks want to put forward. And I'm just excited to be here, and if you have any questions, I welcome them.
Any other questions?
Okay. I just want to say, one of the, what particularly value-added, if I want to use that term, is that his business background, his math teaching background, and his technology background now allows us to have someone that can focus on our data and assessment. So, now, we can get regular reports to everyone to show what progress or not is being made in the various areas that we have. We didn't have anyone that could, that had the educational background, that could analyze the data and then come up with recommendations for how we improve what happens in the classroom. We had tech, we had technical people, and we have excellent technical people. But I think that that blend of business and classroom experience with technology is what we were lacking. So, I want to welcome Aaron. We will look forward to a very productive time with him. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Plus, our math scores are our lowest scores, so we have to address that. Do you have any, oh, I'm sorry. Mrs. Quinney?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was just going to comment on our retreat, and when Mr. Osborne had presented, and I thought it was very insightful that he was able to talk us through some of those gaps in learning that we have and gaps in the MCAS regarding those students who missed one question from getting, from underperforming to being proficient in how to target those. I think he's got a lot of really good, insightful ideas that I think will help move this district forward, and I wanted to thank him for that presentation and for his commitment to our district. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
No, I think that's an important point. When you look at our test scores, which are, have been consistently low for 10 years, and that's one of the reasons why we're level four. And then, when I made a presentation to the entire faculty, when I looked at their faces, they had never seen it before. And it's kind of hard to improve if you don't know where you are. And so, we haven't been keeping score very well, for lack of a better term, use that analogy. So, Aaron's, one of his strengths would be to keep score for us and to show improvement. He's already developed a end-of-unit test for Algebra I classes, so we have a consistency of all the algebra classes now. And then, the expectation, the test is exactly like MCAS. We have to be more serious about it, whether we like it or not. And I think that there were some attitudes of some, someone that was coming for the school committee that hated MCAS. Whether you like it or not, it's the law. I can talk a chapter and verse about some of the issues regarding the SAT tests, but if you want to go to college, you got to do well on it. So, this is the issue. So, here we are, we have that, we can't blow it off, say it's irrelevant. It's not irrelevant. They rank us by that, and I think everybody recognizes the value of your house is based upon how good your schools are, and the perception of communities is based upon. So, we, we need to move the MCAS scores up. And what Ms. Quinney was talking about is, we've analyzed the students who took the test. We have, we've identified a number of kids who I call bubble kids. One or two more questions, I'll jump next to the proficient or to the advanced or needs improvement out of the failure rank, and then focus on them, and then make sure that they understand how to take the test. They understand what's asked of them, and then practice before we do it. I think that, that this year, I expect a, a jump. If you look at our test scores over time, they've been declining. We need to turn that herd, as I always say, and make it head roughly northeast. That's where we want to go, north and east with the test scores. So, I think this, this is one addition that's absolutely necessary. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Quinney? Ah, Mrs., what's your name? Donovan?
That's okay. I just wanted to make a comment, because I know that Pat and Aaron are both still here. And in terms of time being here, I know both of them have been here just a very short while. However, sitting through our retreat on Saturday, it's very evident to me that you are two very competent people, and it's nice to know that we have a competent team sitting at the dais. We are being lead, being led by a very, the most competent of superintendents, and to finally have a district leadership team that is competent, that is committed, that enjoys coming to work, that is rolling up their sleeves, that is in it for no other reason but then for our kids. And you both are from out of town, you do not have families here, you do not live in town. However, you are two of the most dedicated district leadership team people that we have. And as a person, though, I want to thank you for that, because I think that we're on the right track. We know what direction we're heading in, and as a team, between the school committee with Buzz and with, with you and the rest of our principals and the other important people that make up our district leadership team, we definitely on the right track. So, I thank you for your time and your commitment to us. Thank you.
What she said. Under school committee actions, there are quite a few actions this evening. We have the third reading and adoption of policy files, BB, BBAA, BBBB, I mean, BBBBA and BBBBB. All is revised November 12, 2013. Is there a motion? Dr. Domenico?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to waive the third reading of Agenda Items 12, 8 through C.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second. Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Donovan. So, we have a motion to waive the readings of these three policies, BB, BBAA, BBBB. Is there any discussion on the motion to waive the readings? Seeing none, can I have a roll call vote, please, on the motion to waive the readings?
Mrs. Congdon?
Yes.
Dr. D'Amico?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Quinney?
Yes.
Mr. Olivo?
Yes.
Six yes?
Thank you. The motion carries. And now, we need a motion on the adoption of the policies known as the School Committee Legal Status Policy, School Committee Member Authority, and School Committee Member Qualifications Oath of Office.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Dr. D'Amico, seconded by Mrs. Congdon. Is there any discussion? Mrs. Quinney?
Madam Chair, if anyone has any questions, I think I've articulated the changes repeatedly. If anybody has any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Thank you. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Sure. Dr. D'Amico?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Quinney?
Yes.
Mr. Olivo?
Yes.
Mrs. Congdon?
Yes.
Six yes?
Thank you. The motion carries. Agenda item, under School Committee Actions, D, the chair to form an ad hoc facilities naming committee. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Donovan. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. D'Amico. Is there any discussion? Mrs. Donovan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I didn't know if you could give a little background as to why?
Do you have the paperwork?
Yes.
Thank you. I do have discussion, and I forgot my paperwork. Thank you very much. The purpose of the forming this ad hoc facilities naming committee is to review school committee policy regarding the naming of school facilities to answer some questions. Earlier this year, it was suggested by a former school committee member that a building be renamed for a teacher who recently retired. And in reviewing the current policy, Policy FF, it specifically has language of, that precludes permitting the renaming of the existing structures or physical spaces under our jurisdiction. I would like to pull a committee together to answer some specific questions. And I'd like this committee, I don't have people necessarily in mind yet, I just would like the authority to pull together and request some input from the community on what we should be doing. In just doing a quick, you know, kind of internet search on this issue, most school districts have some sort of policy to address the naming of current buildings and/or certain areas of those buildings. And so, that's something that that committee would be charged with doing. The composition would be probably nine members, thinking of inviting school committee members, town council, and some citizens to participate. The length of the appointment would be through June 30th of this year, or until dissolved by this committee. And I also have an estimated time commitment. I don't think this would take a great deal of time, probably an initial meeting, a review of current policy, general discussion. Second meeting for some research and discussion, third meeting for recommendations. And the committee would then come to the school committee with a recommendation, which we could either accept or not accept. They would present a final report to us. All meetings of this committee would comply with Massachusetts Open Meeting laws. And ultimately, however, the school committee is responsible for the final determination whether any school facility or portion thereof is renamed. So, that was, those were my thoughts in that. And I don't know if anybody else has anything else to add, or? Dr. D'Amico?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I did not attend the meeting, but I did review the material that I received afterwards, the minutes and the discussion. And I think our policy really addresses renaming of existing buildings. I, that leads me to understand that the buildings that do not have a name can be named, obviously. So, I don't think we would be violating the policy with a specific example that was recommended early this fall with naming of the building. I don't think we're renaming anything. However, the policy at the same time assures that a school committee cannot arbitrarily change the name of already-named building for somebody that they may like better later, or, and I think that's reasonable. You know, if a certain, it's like Lincoln Memorial, probably in DC will stand as long as we're all alive, and then some, and they're not going to rename it. So, I think policy does both. You know, it allows us the authority to attach significance to them according to the will of the town and its constituents. I fully support that having an ad hoc group of people that represent the town should definitely be involved in, you know, what do we choose? It should not be a purview of seven people on the school committee to name, much less rename, anything. But as far as the action that was recommended, I think in the fall, I think it would be wise not to delay those. These are sentimental issues sometimes, and I think they need to be taken care of swiftly. And I don't see currently any prohibitive language in the policies formed. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Okay. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Quinney?
Yes.
Mr. Olivo?
Yes.
Mrs. Congdon?
Yes.
Dr. D'Amico?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Six yes?
Thank you. The motion carries. The next item on the agenda is Item E, the vote to approve an increase in the school lunch price to $2.50 per student per day to be implemented effective February 3, 2014. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Dr. D'Amico makes the motion?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Congdon. Is there any discussion? Can we have a roll call vote?
Mrs. Quinney?
Yes.
Mr. Olivo?
Yes.
Mrs. Congdon?
Yes.
Dr. D'Amico?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Six yes?
Thank you. Next is a vote to ratify the contract between the Southbridge School Committee and the Southbridge Education Association for the period of July 1, 2013 through June 30, 2013. Is there a motion?
So moved.
2014, I'm sorry. Dr. D'Amico makes the motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Quinney. Is there any discussion on the contract? Dr. D'Amico?
I just have a question. Reading the duration of this effectiveness, so all the amounts now approved will be awarded through Beck Bay for the year, correct?
November 15.
From November.
Yes.
The contract is effective for the period July 1 through June 30, but the financial package is retro to November 3?
Uh huh.
Is there any other discussion? Any discussion on this side?
Couldn't afford to go all the way back.
Okay. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Olivo?
Yes.
Mrs. Congdon?
Obstain.
Dr. D'Amico?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Quinney?
Yes.
Five yes and one abstained?
Thank you. The motion carries. Agenda item number G, the vote to assign school committee members to sign expenditure warrants. Assigned would be Mrs. Jill Congdon, Mrs. Lauren McLaughlin, Mr. Christopher Olivo, Mrs. Erin Quinney. Alternates, Dr. Tanya D'Amico, Dr. Thomas O'Leary. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Dr. D'Amico, seconded by Mrs. Congdon. Is there any discussion? Mrs. Donovan?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Through you, to you, just a quick question. I did not see my name on here. I know currently, I am authorized to sign expenditure warrants, and I'm also the payroll warrant signer. Would it just be easier to leave this as it is, or is there, was there a reason that I was left off?
There was not a reason that you were left off. I think that might have been just an oversight. We want to just have enough authorized signers of those expenditure warrants so that they are covered. So...
So, we would, as it stands.
Yep.
Okay. So, that's fine then. Thank you.
Okay. Is there any other discussion? Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Congdon?
Yes.
Dr. D'Amico?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Quinney?
Yes.
Mr. Olivo?
Yes.
Six yes?
Thank you. The motion carries. A vote to approve assigned subcommittees and members effective January 4, well, probably January 15, 2013 through June 30, 2014. Oh, it's January 14, 2014 through June 30, 2014. I don't know why, I still can't get that right. Is there any, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Donovan, seconded by Mrs. Congdon. Is there any discussion? I'll just make the discussion. The changes that I've proposed after discussion with school committee members for a negotiation subcommittee, the chair would be Mrs. Erin Quinney. Members, Dr. D'Amico and Mrs. Donovan. Alternate, Mr. Olivo. For policy, the chair again would be Mrs. Quinney. Members, Mrs. Congdon, Mr. Olivo, with an alternate of Mrs. Donovan. For family and community engagement, the chair, Mrs. Jill Congdon. Members, Dr. D'Amico, Mr. Christopher Olivo. Alternate, Dr. O'Leary. Chair of the Curriculum Subcommittee would be Mrs. Donovan. Members, Dr. D'Amico, Mrs. Jill Congdon, and alternate, Dr. O'Leary. Any other discussion? Can I have a roll call vote for that?
Dr. D'Amico?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Quinney?
Yes.
Mr. Olivo?
Yes.
Mrs. Congdon?
Yes.
Six yes?
Thank you. The next agenda item, there's no unfinished business this evening. Under new business, I'd like to announce the next regular school committee meeting will be held at 7:00 PM, January 28, 2014, in Town Council Chambers. The next item is member forum. Are there any members who would like to speak this evening to address? Mrs. Congdon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just, I wanted to thank ASPIRA. Mrs. Quinney and I had a chance to go to their event, the Fiesta de Reyes, a couple of weeks ago, held at the Polish Club. And it was to honor their scholarship recipients, Kelsey Aponte, Tanisha Espino, Maria Zavala, and Ariana Rivas, as well as have some really great food and listen to some good bands and some, watch some really good dancing. And it was a nice night. The ASPIRA group honored these recipients. They gave them a $500 scholarship, and they have to complete a semester of school, and then they're awarded the $500 after their first completed semester. They had a lot of raffles to raise money for these scholarships, and it was really a great evening. And I wanted to thank ASPIRA for putting on such a really good event. It was a nice time. I also wanted to say that today, I got in the mail, the PTA is doing the Worcester Sharks Game where Trouton Street School and West Street School will be singing "God Bless America" in the National Anthem on Friday, February 21 at the Worcester Sharks Game. Tickets are $12, and checks can be made out to the Worcester Sharks and sent into any of the elementary schools. If any members of the public would like to attend to, order forms are available in the schools. And you'll be receiving the $12 tickets for that event. So, that is it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to? Mr. Olivo?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would just like to make an announcement. My family and I attended the Southbridge Elementary's Arch Initiative, which is a subcommittee of the PTA Holiday or Christmas Festival at House of Destiny Church. This is kids from elementary school to the fifth and sixth grade, or the fifth graders, performed in a dance group called Latin Dance Fusion. And there at the festival, they, they, they put on a performance of two dances. And it was a very enjoyable day, minus the snow. That group was headed up by Julie Hurley and Cindy Capillo. The dance instructor was Annalise Rosso. And again, thank you to them, and thank you to House of Destiny Church for hosting that event. On a second item, I would like to announce the ASPIDA of Mass Academy, which was a flyer that was given to me on behalf of Gilmarri Flores. And this was to be decimated to the widest public forum as possible. And basically, what this is, is the opportunity for students, high school sophomores and juniors, to attend these, this academy, which is prep for SATs. And along with that, it, you know, it gives them the opportunity to earn gift cards, movie tickets, they have field trips that they take to different colleges. I've seen some students take this program and improve their SAT scores, and strongly recommend this program. It is free of charge. The students can register and pick up an application at the high school guidance office. And these flyers are posted around town and around the high school. So, if these students have any questions, all they have to do is see their guidance counselor. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mrs. Quinney, Mrs. Donovan? Mrs. Quinney?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to concur with what Mrs. Congdon said. The Fiesta de Reyes was a lot of fun, and thank you to ASPIRA. I also wanted to, I had the opportunity to attend the winter concerts at Eastford Road School and at West Street School. Mr. Kim did a really nice job at Eastford Road, and the kids had a lot of fun, and I know the parents really enjoyed being able to watch their children perform. And the same was true at West Street School of Mr. Heath. The concert there was also wonderful to see, and the band was able to perform. And I think that it was a great opportunity to showcase a lot of the positive things that are happening in our schools, and the dedication of the music teachers to put on such a performance, and their dedication to the kids, and creating an environment that celebrates the arts. So, thank you to them, and thank you to ASPIRA. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Mrs. Donovan?
Yep, thank you, Madam Chair. What I would like to do first is just congratulate the students and the Abigail Adams Scholarship honorees that were here tonight. It's a testament to show that there's still hope for the Southbridge Public School system, that we still have some fantastic kids that are able to thrive in the academic environment that we have here. Everybody's always throwing everybody under the bus, but these kids are a standing example of, it can be done. And obviously, you know, we recognize our subgroups, and we're working on those, but it's just a testament to hard work, good parenting, good teaching, and an overall love of learning for these kids. So, many congratulations to them, as well as to their families. Just to reiterate, Mrs. Quinney and Mrs. Congdon, I too attended the winter concerts that happened before the holiday season. So, many kudos to the music teachers, as well as the band directors, that did a great job with our kids. One thing I'd like to just toss out there for maybe future discussion down the road, we hear a lot about teacher evaluations and evaluating the superintendent and evaluating the school committee. I don't know if it's something that we can talk about. I was thinking of as a way for parents to perhaps evaluate their child's teacher at some point, either through the midway mark, or at the end of the year, just to get an overall experience of how his or her child is doing in a classroom. We have a lot of data, and we're doing standardized testing, but there is that personal effect as well. And I just think it would be, perhaps it would be beneficial for us to provide our parents with a way to evaluate their own child's teacher, the pros and the cons, and what, what would, you know, what would be beneficial for them moving forward. So, again, that's just something I'm throwing out there. Finally, Happy New Year to everybody. And in this new year, I, you know, did a lot of self-reflecting at the beginning of the year, and I just want to assure that I am still very committed to this job that I have as a public servant on the school committee. My focus is very steadfast on student achievement. I want to see things get better. This is personal for me on many levels, but for the biggest level of all, it's for every single child that's in our schools. We finally are lining up our, getting our ducks in a row so that we can make profound changes that will last, last the test of time. I mean, the time is now, and I'm committed. I mean, the time is now, and I'm committed. And what I wanted to say is, I cannot do it alone. Seven of us up here can't do it alone. And what really caused me to reflect on this, I was watching January 6th, Marty Walsh, he's the new mayor of Boston. As you know, Mayor Manino had been up the mayor for 20 years, so now they have a new mayor. And I watched the inauguration, and I listened to all the speeches, but what moved me the most was at the very, very end of the inauguration, before the final benediction was given, the gentleman who was to give the benediction asked everybody to stand. And what he said was, turn to somebody standing next to you, somebody you do not know, and say, hello neighbor, we are in this together. And I thought that was extremely profound, that we are all in this together. It isn't just a group of elective officials, it's not just a group of teachers, it's the entire community. And there's a lot of things that people in the community can do to help make this a better place for all of our kids. There's a lot of opportunity. And even if you feel there's, you don't know what you can do, call and ask what you can do. We'll find something for you. If you need something clarified, call and ask, we'll clarify. If you have a question, call and ask, we'll answer the question. We are all in this together, whether or not you have a child in the school system or not, whether you're old, whether you're young. If you live here, you're in this together with us. So I ask you to remember that, that when you think about doing something negative, or you think about leaving for whatever reason, stop and think, neighbor, we're in this together. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Donovan. What she said. Is there anything else? Thank you very much. I would like to turn the gavel over to Mrs. Donovan, as I have something that I want to say, not as chair of this school committee, but as an individual member. So I'm going to pass the gavel over to Mrs. Donovan. I was going to use a few minutes here to talk about how 2014 is really a critical year for Southbridge, not just the schools, but our town. However, something recently transpired that I would like to share, and it kind of changed the track of what I was going to say, and so here goes. A local blog recently posted a video parody of me, supposedly of things that I said at a local PTA meeting. The subsequent postings deteriorated into a discussion about my physical appearance. I am referred to as morbidly obese, given the acronym M-O-B, Morbidly Obese Blueberry, hence the blue this evening. Getting a little emotional, because I'm not really emotional for myself. This is, I'm doing this for my daughters, because we spent some time talking about this. I want my daughters to know that bullies come in all shapes and sizes, and that sometimes in the forms of people you at least suspect. While it is legal certainly to criticize me and my appearance, it's just not kind to make fun of people. I did attempt to discuss this with the owner of that blog in an effort to start an open dialogue, not specifically about this issue, but more specifically about how we could improve what's going on externally, how we're perceived as a school committee, how we can move this community forward. And we've not had a chance to connect as of yet. But it has been my experience, and it should be noted that the blog owner, to my knowledge, is not the person who posted the comments about me. Those were done anonymously. Ironically, the same people that are requesting transparency for us do not request the same, do not expect the same for themselves. So it's obviously been my experience, the people that do resort to name-calling do it because they have little else in their toolbox, as raised to believe that, you know, and to know that if all you have is a hammer, you treat everything as if it were a nail. And I'm sharing this all with you tonight because, not because I want sympathy, please know that, I am overweight. But what does that possibly have to do with the fact that our school district has been chronically underperforming for a generation? We are entering a generation of students that have been let down. And guess who they've been let down by? The adults in this community, who are supposed to be setting an example for them. I share this with all you to show my daughters that you can't control what others will do or say, but you can control how you react to it. I do not live in the shadows. I'm accessible by phone, by email, by regular mail. I'm on this desk every two weeks. I'm in the superintendent's office pretty much every Wednesday morning, and a lot more, it would appear, yep. Members of the community are welcome, and please know this, at any time to submit questions to the school committee. You can do that through sending something into the superintendent's office. And we will try to do those. We'll try to do a better job. I welcome the inquiries, actually. The overwhelming number of inquiries that I receive when I'm stopped in a grocery store, when I'm out and about in the community, when somebody calls me, is this true, is that true? Believe it or not, I would, and the only reason I'm not going to say 100% is because that's an absolute. So I'll say probably 99% of them are really based on, maybe there's a tiny kernel of something that once resembled the truth, but is really not true at all. So come directly to the source and ask the questions. Sometimes we're up here, and we're kind of in our own little world, we're trying to do the best we can, but sometimes what seems so obvious to us isn't obvious to everybody out there. So I just want you to know that. When Chris Clark left as town manager last month, what did he say was the biggest problem in Southbridge? He didn't say that attracting new business or unemployment, the budget or poverty was the biggest issues facing our community. What did he say? Low self-esteem. We recognize that. I've said it for a long time. You can mock me for it. You can make a video about it. It's the absolute truth. The one constant that has remained in this community for the, you know, going on 11 years, that this district has been suffering, that this community has been suffering, is the dialogue, the lack of civilized discourse about real problems that are facing our youth. The negativity is not setting a good example for our youth. How do we expect good behavior from our kids when we can't ourselves do that? The good news is that we all have the power to change it, but only if we say enough is enough. Each one of us can choose today, right now, to be part of the problem or part of the solution. We can hit the reset button. That's what I genuinely was attempting to do when I tried to contact the blog owner. Let's reset what has happened. If anyone in this community would like to meet with me, to have a dialogue or discussion, I'll be at Books &amp; Beans on Saturday at 10 o'clock. Come down. Maybe we can share a blueberry muffin. Yes, folks, I am overweight. I have a mirror. That's not a surprise to me, believe it or not. That's probably the one thing in Southbridge we can all agree on. Maybe that's a good start. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. There is no executive session this evening, so at this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you. Second. Thank you. Roll call. Show of hands. I'm sorry, let's do show of hands. Show of hands, everybody. Thank you. Appreciate it.